I'd like to call to order the City of Belton Planning Commission session. This is Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. Could we have the roll call, please?
Chairman McPherson.
Here.
Marilla Arkey.
Here.
Councilmember Pryon.
Here.
Commissioner Christensen. Commissioner Create.
Here.
Commissioner McDonough.
Here.
Commissioner Walton.
Here.
Thank you. First item we have tonight would be for the approval of minutes from our February 4th Planning Commission meeting. I was made aware that there is one slight correction that needs to be made on here, and that is under the staff that was present. It was Ryan that was here as Assistant City Engineer and not Dane. So it's just.
Oh, he's back.
I saw you last time. I would have let it go, Dane.
That was a trip.
But.
That was great.
So we will make that final correction in here if that's acceptable.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 4th, 2025, Planning Commission meeting minutes as amended.
Second it.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Any other corrections or notion or notices that need to be made on here? If not, we will approve these as amended and take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Moving on to our new business for this evening. Item, first item is FY 2026, a review of the capital improvement program. And is this going to be the director?
Yeah, I'll present this. So in the packet is a copy of the FY 2026 Capital Improvements Program, which is due to start on April 1st of this year and goes through March 31st of 2026. This has already been presented to council. It will be formally before them next week, but the last few years, we have brought this forward to Planning Commission for just your guys' information and a recommendation to council for the approval of the CIP. I won't go through, you obviously have the entire list in your packet. I won't go through everything because some of these things, I'm really just going to focus on the items that I think impact the Planning Commission and development in general. Won't get too in the details on anything related to police, fire, some of the more technical things that they are purchasing. But in the general fund capital, a few upgrades with City Hall and the annex. The big thing on here for the Planning Commission to be aware of, which I think you all are aware of, is the UDC update, which we've talked about before. We currently, in this fiscal year, have $100,000 budgeted for that. We are proposing to roll that over and ask for an additional $25,000 just to cover increased costs for professional services. We actually just finalized the contract today and should be getting the signature from the consultant on that. So we will have a formal announcement of the consultant here in the next couple of weeks, and we will have that contract to council on March 25th. Survey equipment, we have, one of our engineers is a licensed professional surveyor, and so purchasing a survey equipment will save us tens of thousands of dollars every year on survey costs that we currently have to have professional services provide. These are some other general fund. This is from the public safety sales tax. I'm not going to go into those in any detail. Most of these are for police and fire, just general equipment upgrades, some various room upgrades at the facilities.
I do have one question if I can interrupt for just a second. On that police, your cursor just happened to hit on it as you were scrolling through. It says police 20 patrol vehicles, and then in parenthesis, it's two. I'm guessing from that cost, they're purchasing two vehicles with a fleet of 20. Is that?
Yes, it should just be two. I'm not sure what the 20, 20 is.
If not, I wanted to know where they were getting those vehicles.
Yeah, I'm getting on that list if they can get 20 for a hundred grand.
Pick up a couple more.
What that 20 would be.
Yeah. And then just again, equipment upgrades and PD. For parks, outdoor pickleball courts, that is a big one that is proposed at High Blue or at Wallace Park. Some additional improvements to the walking trail at Wallace Park. And then a pretty sizable one there is basically a replacement of the current playground at Wallace Park with an all-inclusive playground. So that's kind of their big project for FY 2026. And then the restroom facility at Cleveland Lake should be starting construction soon, and then a parking lot expansion is added with this as well to help continue to develop Cleveland Lake. And then this page is more of just kind of general maintenance and equipment for various parks, facilities, and vehicles. New gym floor at High Blue, and then some additional upgrades there as well.
I would mention along with the parks with the trail, if nobody or if people have not been aware and have not seen it, the mural that was painted on that tunnel going through there is really neat and great addition.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure if they're 100% done yet, but there is a plan in the spring to have kind of a ribbon cutting and a community celebration of that. So that more details will be coming soon on that.
Month or so gone, looks great.
Yeah. Economic Development Fund, this would include, we already have in the current budget, wayfinding signage, there will be four new wayfinding signs that will be put in. This is an additional 20,000 for the second phase of the wayfinding signage plan that's currently in development. The first four will replace the old purple and gold signs that are around town.
Halloween signs?
They're not, you can't really tell that they're purple and gold anymore, but I think that's what they originally were. Those should be replaced sometime in June is the latest update that I had on that. Street funds, we have $75,000 in there for beautification, which would include the re-landscaping of landscape islands along 163rd, Marquee Parkway, and Mullen Road. That would include the new improvements to Mullen Road. We have the sidewalk match and then some improvements on Second Street to help with some stormwater improvements related to development on Second Street. Street vehicles and some additional Public Works vehicle and general maintenance. Wastewater, one of the improvements is based on, I believe this is all reimbursed through MDNR, but there is a sewer line improvement that needs to be made to Olson Acres, which is outside of the city. But it was a subdivision that was on Septic that essentially had failed, so that is something that will be tying into our city sewer. And then some general wastewater upgrades to equipment and the supply stations. On water, again, vehicle replacements, and then there's water line replacements on there for multiple projects throughout the city. On the Gulf side, they have cart path repairs, some irrigation system control updates, and then some general equipment replacements. And then the last one is probably most relevant for Planning Commission, and these are the capital projects that could spur some additional development applications in the near future. Larkspur is the connection that currently where Larkspur Circle dead ends in front of Teak Tractor would connect to behind Cedar Tree Shopping Center. So that would help alleviate, provide another point of access for the retail areas in that area. Marquee Parkway, this is the extension that's already been planned and announced between 163rd Street and North Scott. Street and curb, continuing to work through the bond on that, $8 million of paving and curbs throughout the city. The North Cast Parkway connection, this is the connection from where North Cast Parkway currently dead ends at Peculiar Drive, just the west of the interchange at I-49, and this would be a connection that would connect to Mullen Road at approximately 187th Street. And then lastly, Hargis Gardens, this is part of an ongoing stormwater improvement. This is the last phase of that at Mill Street and Lacy Lane. That would include a roadway realignment at Lacy and Mill, currently offset. And that's it for the CIP. Happy to answer any questions?
I do have one question about the new, with the new work that's been done there by McDonald's connecting to the outer road. Is there additional signage that is going to be put up for that? I know we've got stop signs, but I was watching, we were going through there the other day, and I was watching somebody from out of state trying to figure out where they were supposed to go, and they were kind of lost, and you know, we know, turn there and then that takes you around, but they looked like they were kind of lost, and I didn't know if that was something that's in the works for future or.
Like new signage just directed into the outer?
To the outer road.
Not that I know of, but that's something that I can talk about with Public Works.
For, again, considering, thinking of how we're considering the additional signage throughout the city to try and help people, I just noticed that that was a little difficult, and they were, we were behind them. That's why I noticed they didn't know where they were going.
Okay.
You can have Paul over at Parkers put up some more signs up.
Okay. But just something so that they know where the outer, outer road is, I think could be helpful in that area. Anyone else with questions, comments for staff concerning the capital improvement plan? And so we would just.
Just be a recommendation of approval.
Recommendation to, forward to council for approval if anyone would care to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the capital gains.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have the roll call, please?
Chairman McPherson.
Aye.
Commissioner Walton.
Aye.
Commissioner Create.
Aye.
Marilla Arkey.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonough.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryon.
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Move on to the next item, which is the Unified Development Code, UDC Chapter 40 Updates for Land Use Table, Special Uses, and Uses Subject to Conditions. And Director?
So in your packet, this is a work session, so essentially just wanted to kind of give you a preview of what we've been working on before we formally bring it to Planning Commission. That way, if there's any questions or concerns, we can address that prior to bringing this forward, which we tentatively have on March 18th. This has also been presented to, presented to City Council last week, and then also at the Town Hall that we had on Wednesday. So for those of you that were at either one of those meetings, some of it might be a repeat, but I wanted to at least have it in the packet so you could preview it beforehand. And of course, you can also take a look at it afterward. If I don't address anything, feel free to ask questions or continue to review it, and if you have follow-up questions, let me know. But the purpose of bringing these land use updates forward is, it's the first step in implementing the 2050 Conference of Plan. It addresses land use restrictions that are in the North Scott overlay. We're also updating land use definitions and addressing new land uses that aren't currently in the code. And then a big piece of this is helping, we're focusing more on special use standards and conditions tied to land uses rather than just outright prohibiting a land use. There's a number of land uses that may be appropriate with just some additional standards tied to them to make sure that they're not a nuisance to adjacent properties. And then lastly, this is intended to help expand business and employment opportunities in the city. These are the 14 use group categories. I won't go through all of them, but that's basically every land use will fit into one of these use groups. In each section, the land uses that are highlighted in yellow are the new uses that we're adding. And then we have the land use table here with each zoning district. S is where it's a special use permit is required. C is for conditional use or basically a use that has some conditions that are required. P is for permitted uses, it's just allowed by right, subject to the rest of the zoning code. And then A means it's accessory. And so the accessory is usually in combination with a special use permit or conditions that are tied to it. And then the last column references which provision of the code it's tying back to. So these are the different sections within the land use chapter that you will refer to for that specific land use. Again, I won't go through each one of these, but just wanted to explain the land use table, and if there are any specific questions about a land use, please feel free to ask. The biggest changes I think we're making are on the vehicle sales and service. Specifically for North Scott, we're proposing to eliminate the standalone land use table that's currently applies to North Scott and just have North Scott fall under the land use table that applies everywhere else in the city. That's the consistent feedback that we've pretty much heard from property owners and businesses along North Scott for a number of years, and the discussions throughout the development of the Conference of Plans supported making that change. Instead of that, typically in the C2 general commercial zoning district, which is what most of our commercial zoning districts, commercial properties are zoned in the city, instead of allowing them by right, they'd become a special use permit. We think that's a fair trade-off. Currently, they're allowed by right in C2 outside of North Scott, which basically covers the 58 corridor, but they weren't allowed at all in North Scott. So we're trying to accommodate both corridors and just require a special use permit. That gives us a little bit more discretion when we review them to determine if it's the right use for that location. And then, of course, there's some additional standards that apply to those. And so that impacts the vehicle repair uses and the light vehicle and equipment sales. And then we also have heavy vehicle repair and heavy vehicle sales, which wouldn't be allowed in C2, but they'd be allowed in the C3 zoning, which is the more intensive commercial zoning category. So that would be semi-trucks, larger type of equipment, not just your typical cars and And then the other big changes with the storage facilities. So currently, we only allow storage facilities in light industrial and heavy industrial zoning, which we really don't have any heavy industrial. So pretty much they're all in light industrial, or there's a number of non-conforming storage facilities in general commercial. We're proposing to still not allow those in general commercial, but allow those in the C3, which is the regional commercial with a special use permit. That at least gives a number of those existing storage facilities the opportunity to potentially rezone, to come closer into conformance with the code. It also allows, if you rezone in North Scott, the opportunity to get a special use permit for self-service storage, which is indoor storage, which is basically what the new U-Haul facility will be. But with that, a mini warehouse, which is this more traditional style that we typically have seen in the past, could be allowed as an accessory if it's behind the building or connected to the primary interior storage facility. We, in the current code, we have these land uses prohibited currently. We feel like there's, we have a lot of concerns with these land uses based on some of the ongoing conversations around them, and so we're not comfortable with making any updates to accommodate these just yet. We are going to work with the UDC consultant on their expertise, since they do, they've done dozens, if not hundreds, of UDC updates, so they're more familiar with these land uses than we would be. But that would include data centers, which we know that Peculiar recently had a lot of issues with requests that they had. And then battery energy storage systems, this is something that's come up recently with different companies wanting to build these types of facilities near substations, and there's some, some safety concerns with those. And then RV parks, they're currently not addressed in the code. We know that we've had RV parks in the past that sort of became a challenge for us from a property maintenance and a nuisance standpoint, so we're not quite ready to re-add that, and we don't, we also haven't really had any requests for them or have a good location for where those could be located in the city. So we're not going to address those at this time. And that is pretty much it on the land use section, and then I'll get into the North Scott corridor updates. Any questions on the land use chapter before I move on?
You mentioned no requests for the recreational vehicle parks. What about data center or battery energy storage?
We have had inquiries on both of those uses as well. Typically, when the data centers, when we've had calls about data centers that are very preliminary, they are also generally smaller than some of the bigger ones that have been proposed. So we haven't had any inquiries about like from Meta, Google, those giant ones that are under construction in the northland, also not on the same scale as the one that was proposed in Peculiar. They've generally been 10, 5, 10 acres, but their first question is always about incentives, and that's, you know, based on the number of jobs that they're providing, you know, they come in and say, we're going to provide five or 10 jobs. That's not really the type, necessarily an incentive-worthy project. So that, I think, a lot of them are just kind of fishing for incentives and seeing what city is going to give them that, and that's, based on the locations they were looking at, we don't think those were the highest and best use for those properties, so.
Good. Move on to the North Scott Corridor Overlay District Updates then.
All right. And then in the packet, there is a draft of the overlay that we're proposing. So currently, the overlay district is a 36-page document that was adopted in 2017. We're proposing to reduce that to three pages, to shorten that. And really, almost all the changes that are within that document are intended to help accommodate kind of the, the general character that's already been established on the corridor, but also make some incremental improvements as properties expand or redevelop. So some of the things that we would be looking for are some additional landscaping along the frontage, parking lots being paved and striped. You know, there's some other updates coming into compliance with any property maintenance or nuisance code issues that may exist, potentially some additional screening of outdoor storage areas. So things like that, that would just seem to be brought up to code in any development project, we're just making it clear that that would still be required here. But for new construction, we are trying to accommodate reduced setbacks, further setbacks on the front if they're doing a storefront design, and then metal siding, paneling on non-street side and rear elevations, that's been a significant concern that we've had from a lot of business owners, is that the current overlay doesn't typically allow metal on any facade, and so that is a cost prohibitive, especially considering a lot of the buildings out there are already metal. We're kind of looking to see the front dressed up a little bit. You know, these are good examples where they still accommodate metal even on the front, but they put masonry or some other design elements there to not make it look solely as a metal building. Overhead garage doors, currently, it says that they just can't be seen from the street, but if they're on the side elevation, they're still going to be seen. We don't have any concerns with that. But if they are on the front of a building, they would need to have transparency. And then outdoor storage, that's been another challenge. The North Scott overlay currently doesn't allow any outdoor storage in a commercial zoning district, but we think that there's different levels of appropriateness based on your zoning and then what kind of screening you have. So here's just a few different examples of outdoor, some different outdoor storage in similar districts to North Scott, where they, they have equipment and materials and supplies stored outside, but you typically don't see it because they put up a privacy fence. So you know, that is what we would be looking for. Additionally, if it's in the industrial zoning districts, which are primarily on the north end of the North Scott corridor, there are some exceptions for outdoor paving. So instead of just paving the entire outdoor storage area with concrete or asphalt, they could do a dustproof chip and seal, which we have approved on a couple of projects, including the comfort systems on Marquee Road. We approved that last year with that same requirement. So there's been a precedent that's been set there, and we don't foresee any issues with that. We've made it clear, though, that that still needs to be maintained, so if it, if it starts to wear down, it will have to be, you know, resealed. We still will have the prohibition on shipping and cargo containers, though, so those all need to be inside. I kind of went over, these are the things that need to be brought up to code. The only thing I didn't mention was, we have a lot of trash receptacles that are just kind of floating around, so those do need to be fenced or screened whenever something's been, an addition or expansion's been proposed. We also typically, when a new business goes in, that's part of our business license inspection This is just a good example of kind of what we're hoping to see more of on North Scott. SMC Electric, they recently did an improvement last year at 803, and they restripped, repaved their parking lot. They installed some new overhead doors on the front. They technically weren't, they don't meet the transparency requirement that we're requiring with this update, but they generally had already replaced those where doors were previously located. They did a storefront element in there as well, just to kind of brighten the building up a little bit, and closed their dumpster, and then they added a little bit of landscaping along the front edge. So these are the kinds of incremental improvements that we're hoping to see. It's still a metal building, and it, but it's been, I think, successful for the corridor. And then, yeah, this is just the, the language that we're proposing to bring forward. Simplified everything to try to make this as easy as possible, and generally, all of the changes are actually somewhat exceptions to the code that applies elsewhere in the city. So we heard that we made it more difficult instead of easier, so we're trying to make this a little bit easier for businesses to expand and redevelop, and we still have vacant lots on North Scott that we'd love to see developed. Outdoor storage. Outdoor storage, I'll just mention cars, trucks, trailers and construction equipment can be stored in outdoor storage areas in commercial zoning. And then in addition to those in the industrial zonings, you can have materials and supplies as well. We heard that from a lot of contractors who already have materials and supplies stored outside, that they couldn't expand or add additional outdoor storage. But, you know, when you have a lot, you know, plumbing companies, things like that, they're going to have water lines. They're going to have a lot of things like that stored. So as long as they're stacked neatly, there's still proper ingress egress for vehicles. And they're not stacking things so high that they're visible over the fence, that's our main concern. That is it.
All right. Any comments, questions?
I got one question on the transparency doors. You're talking about having glass then?
Yep.
So SMC, if they did this after this is passed, those would have to be glass doors instead of solid overhead doors?
Yeah, that. Yeah, and we don't really get into necessarily a, a specific amount of transparency. I mean, here's, this example here is 100%. But even like these doors have some transparency. So, I mean, I think the, the main intent is to try to get away from just a wall of just solid doors. Trying to make it, give it a little bit more of a storefront appearance.
Okay. Makes sense.
And a lot of these North Scott changes came as a result of feedback during the Comprehensive Plan review. Is that correct?
Yes, and actually, a lot of the feedback came even prior to that. But the Comprehensive Plan is really what we needed to get through to give us the solid foundation to make these changes. But we've, we've, there's been a number of property owners that have continuously been in contact with us, waiting some changes. They're, they're not able to make the additions that they've been planning to make for, for many years. In addition to that, there might be other property maintenance or nuisance issues on some of those properties that we could also tackle with this. So, you know, overall, providing some relief can also help get some of the other improvements made that we want and hope will be made there.
Any other?
The harder stuff that we were asking for and getting stuff that we really need.
Yeah.
And what they really need.
Yeah, and we, we've also been reaching out over the last week to let some of the, I mean, we also, Jenna invited all the business owners as well to the Town Hall. There were a number that were there. But we're also following up with some of the businesses that we know that have reached out to us in the past to give them an update. So hopefully, if this is adopted, we'll see an upswing in development along North Scott.
Great. And I would say for anyone that's watching this from the community, went through a lot of material quickly, both with the, the capital improvement and with these. But all of this material is available on the city website, is that correct?
That is correct. We also have a link, so if you go to the helpful link on the agenda where it says upcoming public hearings and neighborhood community meetings, if you click that, the draft of both the land use chapter and the North Scott changes are there. And if anybody is unable to attend the public hearing on March 18th, we've put on there, you can email comments to us at planning@belton.org. So any feedback is appreciated on that.
And this will be coming back then in, at a future meeting for action?
We haven't noticed on, for our next meeting on Tuesday, March 18th.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? Director, anything for your report?
That is it.
So next upcoming meeting date will be March 18th. And follow that with, I don't know, is this, can I, can I trust this, Madison? April 1st, April fools? Do we really have a meeting? Okay.
It is a real meeting.
March 18th and April 1st are the, are the next upcoming meetings for the Planning Commission. So. Any other business?
Second.
Any opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.